This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act NJ SA 10:4-6, head sec, notice of which was sent to the record and the Star Legend was posted on the municipal bulletin board.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia. Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Simpson's absent, councilmember Keeling Geddis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Here. Before we move any further, I'd like to take a moment of silence for David Sim's father, Arthur Simpson, who passed away last Monday, who is being waked tonight at Manala Baptist Church, and I think the burial is on...
Saturday.
Saturday, down South Carolina?
South Carolina.
South Carolina. So if we could have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Would everybody please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I do have a proclamation I'm going to read tonight. It's not being presented to anybody in particular, but it's aimed at Small Business Saturday, which is November 26th, the Saturday, I guess, after Thanksgiving and after Black Friday. And it reads, "Whereas the city of Hackensack supports our local businesses and advocacy groups, which endorse the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday, and whereas Small Business Saturday was created in 2010, to strengthen local business, facilitate job growth, boost the economy, and preserve neighborhoods nationwide; and whereas, according to the Small Business Saturday Consumer Insights survey, an estimate of $16.2 billion was spent at small independent businesses during last year's Small Business Saturday in November of 2015. Now therefore, I, John P. LaBrus Jr., mayor of the city of Hackensack, along with members of the city council, do hereby proclaim Saturday, November 26, 2016, a Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year." Thank you. Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the COW in regular meeting of September 27th and the COW in regular meeting of October 18th, 2016. Motion, please.
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Simpson's absent, councilmember Keeling Geddis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. And now I need a motion for the special meeting on October 12th, 2016.
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia. Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Simpson's absent, councilmember Keeling Geddis.
Um, abstain.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. City manager's report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. The city manager's report for November 1st are, senior citizens' November 1st luncheon is scheduled for November 3rd, 11:30 a.m. at the rec center. At this meeting, the recreation department will announce the holiday senior bus trip. Tickets will not go on sale until November 7th. Please be advised that there are limited amounts of tickets, and it's because this is the first trip for us. More tickets and shows will be coming in the future. Mailing lists and information will be taken at the luncheon for future notification of seniors regarding trips. Two, Veterans Day is November 11th. Ceremony is scheduled for The Green at 11:00 a.m. The snow committee meeting, meeting is scheduled for November 4th, 10:00 a.m. in the conference room. The original discussion called the Blue Line Meeting with the clergy took place on October 26th at 5:30. With additional meetings to be scheduled to discuss cultural diversity on December 7th at 5:30 p.m., all clergy have been advised. I met with Sam Sommerfield at Staub Park regarding to the dog park idea and vision. She has sent me some information. I have shared that with councilwoman Keeling Geddis, and we're going to get input from residents and also suggestions from other communities on how to make a dog park worthwhile for the residents and obviously the animals that are in this community. And that would be the city manager's report for November 1st.
Thank you. Moving forward, Resolution 411-16.
This is a resolution for the final adoption of ordinance number 39-2016, an ordinance amending Part 2 entitled General Legislation, Chapter 170, entitled Vehicles and Traffic of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code, to amend Section 70 entitled Schedule 21 Parking Meter Zones. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
May I have a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Simpson's absent, councilmember Keeling Geddis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Anybody who would like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward. Seeing none, motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Simpson's absent, councilmember Keeling Geddis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Motion to adopt?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Simpson's absent, councilmember Keeling Geddis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved that the city council of the city of Hackensack County, Bergen, and state of New Jersey, that ordinance number 39-2016 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 412-16.
This is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 40-2016, refunding bond ordinance authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $3 million aggregate principal amount of refunding bonds and/or refunding notes by the city of Hackensack and the county of Bergen, state of New Jersey, for the purpose of funding an emergency appropriation for court ordered payment obligations to be paid by the city in appropriating the proceeds of such refunding bonds to such purpose. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
May I have a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
Second.
Do a second.
In the second, please.
Between one of us. Outside and within. Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Simpson's absent, councilmember Keeling Geddis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. At this time, anybody who would like to speak on this and this only, please come forward.
Richard Salk in Hackensack, New Jersey.
What would I address?
Mayor, really, it's...
Mr. Nix.
I'm not going to be interrupted by Lenny Nix. It's just not going to happen. Would you ask...
Lenny, do not interrupt. He said Hackensack, New Jersey. That's fine. We know Mr. Salk. He said it. Please.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
151 Prospect Avenue.
All right, Rick.
I'm going to go slash my tires. I'm good, bye, okay? Okay. This is an emergency. The last council meeting, there were three resolutions on introduction of this ordinance, the emergency appropriation for funding this, and authorizing you to go to the local finance board for permission.
Right.
Okay. Not that, I know you have to do this, and I support you doing this, to resolve this matter, but I must say, in my experience with the city, now going back a lot of years, close to 30 years, I don't think the city's ever done an emergency appropriation before. I don't think we've ever had to. I'm just saying. So like, this is the mechanism.
Yeah, we have done.
I'm not talking about the temporary ones for budgets. That's, you know, I know that's called an emergency, but that's really not the same thing. It's a different...
I think we did one for the sewer collapse on Anderson, but I'm not...
I just thought, I... Those things happen, and I, you know, certainly if you got hit, for example, I guess, with a judgment for which you didn't have sufficient insurance, this would be the road, the route to go. Would that not be correct?
That would be correct, because otherwise it would impact in the balance of the 2016 budget and certainly 217.
Absolutely. And this is, this one is 3 million, and that would have an impact. You're certainly not going to... I don't have any disagreement with you doing this, but I just wanted the clarity in terms of the mechanism for an emergency appropriation. So thank you.
You're welcome.
If I may, Rick, just in case you have a question after we do this, just so you understand, we have, we're having the public hearing on this tonight because we notified that we're going to, but we're going to have to table it to the vote because we have to wait for the local finance board approval.
Oh, before the final vote?
Yeah, their meeting is November 8th.
So we're tabling it.
So the only reason that it's going to get tabled is because we have to wait for that and vote on it next time, but we're having the public hearing as advertised, okay? You're welcome.
Okay, anybody else from the public on this matter? Seeing none, motion to close?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call, sorry.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Simpson's absent, councilmember Keeling Geddis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Need a motion to table this until we have approval from the local finance board and wait to reschedule this.
I will offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Simpson's absent, councilmember Keeling Geddis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. That's it on that?
That's it on that.
Resolution 413-16.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 41-2016, an ordinance amending Part 2 entitled General Legislation, Chapter 170, entitled Vehicles and Traffic of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code, to amend Section 49.2 entitled Parking for the Handicapped.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Simpson's absent, councilmember Keeling Geddis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance, being ordinance 41-2017, is introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on November 22nd, 2016, at 8 o'clock p.m. or as soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council, and at such time and place all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and at the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 414-16.
This is a resolution authorizing tax refunds.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Simpson's absent, councilmember Keeling Geddis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 415-16.
This is a resolution authorizing a transfer of 2016 budget appropriations.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Simpson's absent, councilmember Keeling Geddis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 416-16.
This is a resolution authorizing change order number 1 for Venora Electric LLC for the emergency generator project.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Simpson's absent, councilmember Keeling Geddis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 417-16.
This is a resolution authorizing a raffle license for the HUMC Foundation.
A motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Simpson's absent, councilmember Keeling Geddis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
I abstain. Resolution 418-16.
The resolution authorizing the payment of bills.
Motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Simpson's absent, councilmember Keeling Geddis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, is there anybody up here in the dais who needs to remove anything from the dais or have an issue? I know deputy, I mean, the clerk is going to be removing some items.
Okay.
That will not be voted on, but there's nothing that's going to be voted on and anybody has an issue with?
No? Okay, we're going to remove Resolution 419, 421, and 422. They shouldn't have been on, didn't have time to remove them. Okay, so the consent agenda now will be from 420, 2016, to Resolution 430, 2016.
Minus...
Minus 419, 421, and 422. The following items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any items requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda, and consent agenda items will reflect in full on the minutes, including any exceptions and/or additions. It includes Resolution 420, which is a resolution authorizing the submission of a New Jersey Department of Transportation Alternative Program Grant Application for the Main Street Streetscape Project. Resolution 423-16, a resolution authorizing the city to enter into a grant agreement with the Bergen County for Community Development Block Grant Road Resurfacing. Resolution 424-16, a resolution authorizing award of bid contract for 2016 supplemental road servicing project. Resolution 425-16, resolution authorizing award of bid contract for Main Street Streetscape Improvement Project. Resolution 426-16, a resolution authorizing professional service agreement for Rubenstein et al. for special litigation attorney. Resolution 427-16 is a resolution authorizing a veteran's tax exemption. 428-16 is a resolution authorizing a family leave of absence for three months. Resolution 429-16 is a resolution awarding state contract for auditorium seating for the Performing Arts Center, and Resolution 430-16 is a resolution authorizing the 2017 meeting dates.
Okay, may I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as it was read by the clerk, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Simpson's absent, councilmember Keeling Geddis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Okay, thank you. At this time, I need a motion to open to the public, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Simpson's absent, councilmember Keeling Geddis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. At this time, anybody who would like to speak, please come forward. We have five minutes. Name and address to the clerk, please.
Richard Salken, 151 Prospect Avenue, where I reside with my wife, Debbie Heck Salken. Case of Deborah Heck versus the city and this council is now nearing its final stages of discovery, and soon will be awaiting a trial date in the United States.
Mr. Salken, I hate to interrupt you, but we're not going to discuss current litigation.
I don't care if you discuss it or not. I can speak about whatever I want, Mayor.
Okay.
But thank you for interrupting me. I'll start over. Please reset it since I was interrupted.
Just please move forward.
Since this group, and mainly you two, Mr. LaBrus and Mrs. Canastrino, seem to enjoy vilifying victims of your misdeeds, I'm speaking out to expose what you have done. The residents and taxpayers deserve no less. Certainly Debbie, my wife Debbie, has been the victim of your cheap shots. Recall December 30th, 2013, when Debbie Carlson was introduced and your then colleague said, "I think I refer to you as the good Debbie." You remember your newsletter on the sick time payouts? Debbie got about $12,000, and you omitted to all those people who got quarter of a million, $300,000, and you admitted later that it was a political piece. You remember your roll call of the special election last year, John? Again, singling out Debbie's case. Funny thing, you're not going to do that anymore. Knowing practitioners have estimated that the likely recovery for Debbie in this case is anywhere from $1.5 to $6 million. Yet this council, led by you, Mrs. Canastrino, had the opportunity to settle Debbie's case for $500,000 as a result of a mediation in June 2015. Your attorneys and your insurance advisors implored you to ratify it, and Debbie, even knowing that her case was worth much more, was trying to save her mom's home in Teaneck from foreclosure, was willing at that point to accept it, yet you reneged on the settlement. But sadly, it's really not you who have to live with the consequences of that idiocy. It's the taxpayers. As the federal judge said when he learned that you had reneged on the settlement, quote, "It's either a smart business decision or it will be a financial disaster for the city of Hackensack." Thus, when one year later you did an about-face and tried to threaten Debbie into now accepting $500,000 settlement, it was very easy for us to say, "See you in court." You are aware that as a result of the reneging, the insurance carrier, as is their contractual right, have walked away from the case. They sent you a letter and told you the city was on its own for any recovery over $250,000. So, when on August 22nd, Judge Carver, in response to a question from Regina De Pasqua, said, "There are millions of dollars in insurance in various layers to protect against claims and taxpayer liability," you folks knew that was inaccurate and didn't apply to Debbie's case. The implication, well, here, consider the case of Kimberly Malt the Roman versus Hudson County. A county employee sued for wrongful discharge. Her attorney offered to settle for $600,000. The county refused. They went to trial. You know what happened last month? A jury verdict of $8.5 million. And where's the money coming from? The taxpayers. There is no longer any insurance coverage to protect the taxpayers in Debbie's case, thanks to your incompetence and your venomous motivations. You see this? This is the settlement agreement from the June 15 mediation. The next time I show it publicly will be after the judgment is entered in Debbie's case. I will be at a press conference in front of 37 Brook Street. I will invite all Hackensack residents to knock on the door and ask the money girl to try and justify her stupidity and why they have to pay for her incompetence. Now, the way things work at these meetings, Mr. LaBrus and Mrs. Canastrino will have the opportunity to have the last word tonight at the end of the meeting. If they choose to address the matter, I would ask anyone who is here or watching this on TV or watches it on YouTube, if you have any questions or want to hear my reply to any statements they make, you're very welcome to call me in my office, and I'd be thrilled to explain it to you. Thank you.
Next, please.
Hi, doon yahna. Good evening. My name's Emilio Valera. I live in 9 Lodi Street. I'm here tonight with my mom. We're trying to get a sign installed in front of our driveway so our neighbors won't block the driveway.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would give your, if, all your information to the city manager, and what he would do is probably send traffic over to evaluate the situation?
Just give me your name, address, and cell number. I'll reach out to you.
I'm sorry?
Is that all he had, had?
Yeah, that's all I had.
Okay, thank you.
Because I didn't want him to use his time writing.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Kaseem Gaines, sorry, I'm a little sick. So, at the special meeting and also at the meeting before that, Mayor LaBrus, Deputy Mayor Canastrino, and also Mr. Carver all commented about the legal fees that were paid or that were ordered to be paid to Mr. Ziza, and that it was the belief that the county prosecutor should be held responsible for those legal fees. I was just wondering if any steps have been taken as of now to hold the prosecutor responsible?
I will defer to the chair's one.
The short answer is no, because there is litigation that is going to follow where the, I'm told by Mr. Ziza's attorney, that she will be suing the prosecutor and the state, and the city will, I do not believe will be a direct defendant in that case, but there may well be employees of the city that are defendants in the case. We'll give the city the opportunity to seek the recovery of those legal fees from the state and the county, and at that point, that will, there's a thing called the entire controversy doctrine, and so it's all going to be part of that litigation.
If that litigation does not come, is there an opportunity for the city to recoup?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay, and is there, my understanding is that there's a deadline, or is that, how does that affect the deadline that the city would have to recoup the costs?
Statute of limitations would either be two or six years, so there's more than enough time for the city to do whatever it needed to do to seek recovery of those legal fees. Again, the city's the innocent party in here. It had no part in the criminal litigation, but by statute, it is obligated to do what it did.
Thank you. I also just wanted to talk about the editorial that appeared in Sunday's paper. I was wondering if, Mayor, if you and Ms. Canastrino wrote that by yourselves, or did you have any assistance from anyone, including Mr. Zabinski and/or the firm?
I'm not going to answer that, Mr. Kaseem. It's, we have a firm, a public relations firm. We, what Mrs. Canastrino and I put in is our decision, whether it's assisted or not.
Whether what?
Whether it's assisted by a PR firm or helped writing it or not. It's our feelings, and that's what went in the newspaper.
I understand, hold on, I'm sorry. I understand, but if it's no issue in your opinion, if a PR firm wrote it, then why not just say...
We have a PR, a PR firm helps us with a lot of things we write, yes, absolutely.
Okay, all right, I'm just, I'm just asking. Hold on, I'm sorry, it's my time.
You're right.
All right, so, in the, in the piece, the word settle and settlement was used several times in the piece, but my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that it's not actually a settlement, it's that it's a court order to pay the legal fees. It's not a settlement. That's a different thing. So, either do you agree that it is not actually a settlement and that the repeated use of the word settlement is incorrect?
That's the title on the document that was signed.
Okay.
We're just referring to the document that was signed.
Okay, but you can understand how that might be misleading and confusing.
There was an agreement, because...
Unfortunately, that's the title.
We didn't have to accept the terms originally, and that's, it was a court order, that's what we did. We could have been crazy and fought that as far as the payment. We never said we were going to fight the payment of this, and we looked at it as a settlement.
Well, that's the title on the document that was signed by the parties. It's called a settlement.
Okay. My, my other question is, in the piece, it says that you asked why the city settled without insisting that Mr. Ziza drop his tort claim, and I'm just wondering how you imagine that being? It's, a person has a constitutional right and privilege to file a tort claim if they so choose, so I'm interested in finding out how, what your vision would have been for Mr. Carver fulfilling a judge's order only if a resident of the city waived his constitutional right to file a tort claim?
Well, number one, I don't know if it was a judge's order to drop administrative charges or not. I don't believe there was. It was a judge's order to pay him his legal fees and his back pay, and that's it, all right? As far as administrative charges, that's a totally different situation.
Right, but I'm asking about, so, but the, in the piece, at that moment, it's referencing, I'm sorry, I just, Mr. Carver used it sometime. In the piece, the specific piece that it was talking about was the 3 million as a whole that you were, that, in that moment, in the editorial?
No, you referred to the tort claim, and this is, I'll finish your question. You were referring to the tort claim, which is a $30 million lawsuit against the city, which several of us thought that we, had we had some administrative charges in place, we might have been able to negotiate out of that deal, because we feel we're not responsible and shouldn't be in that tort claim.
I understand, that's not...
We're done, Mr. Z...
Okay.
Your time is up. There's people waiting, I'm sorry.
Okay, sure.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Joanna Cadieux, 373 DeWolfe, Hackensack. I actually had a question for Mr. Pataglia. Can you explain what you meant during the last meeting when you said that there would be ice cream and 19-year-old girls at the sports dome?
Well, that was a joke that I threw to the guy Chris because I saw him many times in Dunkin' Donuts, having ice cream with 19-year-old girl.
What's funny about that? But what's funny about that?
Huh?
What's funny about that?
Funny because I saw him many times and working hours.
Uh-huh. And you think that's okay?
And that wasn't right.
I'm sorry?
And that wasn't right what he was doing.
But, so it's funny to think that that's going to be done at the sports dome?
You got my answer, that's it.
Okay, so I've heard you say multiple times that you're from Ecuador. I'm from Ecuador too. I found those comments to be actually pretty disgusting because it sounds misogynistic, it sounds sexist to have to talk about women that way. You are how old, sir? A 19-year-old girl would be old enough to be your granddaughter. It's actually pretty disgusting for a council member to make such a colorful comment and expect it to be funny when it denigrates the women that you're talking about, talking about a project that is costing the taxpayer $7 million. So in Ecuador, they have this term, it's called viejo verde, and that's exactly the first thing that came to my mind when I heard the comments, and I really would expect our council people to act with much...
But that shouldn't apply to Chris.
But you made the comment, sir.
Yeah, but that shouldn't apply to him.
And you're a council member where you are, so...
There are some... There are some people there inside this room that have been calling that night "viejo verde."
Right, and you find, okay, and you find that to be acceptable, so... You really should apologize to the people of Hackensack. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, please.
Jason Soam, 151 Prospect Avenue. First of all, I'd like to send my condolences to Councilman Sims and his father.
Thank you, I will pass it on to him.
Thank you. In April of last year, the four of you honored me by appointing me to this council. I was proud of that appointment and I left, I felt that I was joining a reasonable group of people who made decisions that are in the best interest of this community. I, like many residents of our community, have seen the political landscape that has been the center of the ever unbiased Bergen Record editorials. Instead of stories that advertise the redevelopment and awakening in the city, every article that is written focuses on political battles that are plaguing Hackensack. No matter who is morally correct, these articles are doing a tremendous amount of damage to our city's reputation. First, I would ask this council to stop giving reporters the ammunition to tarnish our reputation. I personally feel every one of you is entitled to defend yourselves when attacked. However, making political attacks as elected officials from the seat of the mayor and on the dais, I find inappropriate. I ask you to reflect on your comments. It is time for the leadership of our community to unite this city instead of dividing it by engaging in political fighting from the seat of the mayor. It is time we pool our resources to face the many issues in our community. In the last month, you can't pick up the record without seeing comments from the council on the Ziza lawsuit. No matter how you feel about the trial and Mr. Ziza personally, it is the council's obligation to act in the best interest of the city and its taxpayers. Like we have seen at the advice of Judge Carver, employee liability laws and fee shifting has drastically changed to heavily favor employees during lawsuits. That being said, the longer we wait to work with Mr. Ziza on appropriately moving forward, the more we will be responsible for as taxpayers. This is the reality, no matter how morally incomprehensible any one of you find it. This lesson should have been learned with the mistakes made during the settlement discussions with Mrs. Hecht. I won't get into it, but I was proud to sit on this dais with all of you, and I know the choices you have to make regarding the future of the city are tough ones. I only ask the way it is handled, at least from the mayor's seat, is done with respect and honor of the office. Thank you.
Thank you.
Regina de Pasco, Parker Avenue. I absolutely agree with Mr. Soam about it's time to get past this. Judge Carver, I'm sorry you were collateral damage in this whole thing. You did the right thing. You're doing what's right for the city. We have to move past it. Letters to the editor, continuing to, you know, say degrading things about the man, calling, the things you've called him, is not helping. It's not helpful. You have to move past it. Let it go. Let it go. The more you push, the more you're going to get pushed back. If you haven't learned that by now, you're going to cost us a heck of a lot more money if you don't just stop. No more letters to the editor, don't make it a political issue. It's done. It really is. The city is done with it. If a suit is filed, the tort claim has been filed, you deal with it then, but to continue to do this, it's hurting our city. We need to get, we need to heal, and that's not helping. Speaking of tort claims, wouldn't that, why would the city not file a tort claim in the county matter?
Your honor?
Is the city not required to? Would they, if they intend to sue?
Well, it's really not a tort, but the, my sincere belief is that the litigation is, and just so I say this, the form for the tort claim requires a number. When you actually file suit, unless it's for some certain under a contract, in New Jersey, you're not allowed to put in a number. So, the number that was put in on the tort claim form is a fiction. It's just a number.
Right, oh, absolutely, but I'm talking about suing for the, if you're going to go after the prosecutor's office for the legal fees?
Right.
The 1. whatever million?
Yes.
Why would you not, I mean, if you're, anybody that sues a public entity, even if it's another public entity, I thought had to file a tort claim.
Okay, my problem right now is that you're asking me to delve into litigation strategy. I would be glad to explain it to the mayor and council in closed session as to why, but I'm just going to ask you to believe me that there is a good reason not to take the lead in the litigation.
Okay. The emergency generators, that is over 15% increase in the cost of that project. They didn't know they needed concrete pads for generators? That just boggled my mind. We do need garbage trucks, when we getting them? Any movement on that?
Ted?
I am currently working on the specifications and meeting with sanitation companies to look at their bid specs. There's no point in recreating the wheel. These people do this for a living, and that's the process.
It's in the works, good, good to know. One more question. Who is on the snow committee? Actually, I have two questions. Who's on the snow committee and why is it at 10 o'clock when the average citizen of Hackensack would be working and wouldn't be able to participate?
I personally didn't set the meeting. I know that we're trying to encompass the employees that are working instead of obviously having to pay them.
Do they live in the city? No. Most of them, no. Just saying.
I don't know if you have to live in the city to make this decision, to be candid.
What we deal with, they don't know because they just go through. What we deal with, living here, who, you know, how the snow is piled up, where, the people that live here know that.
I think some of the employees that work here have worked here for 29 years. I think they would have some idea of how much snow or where our problem areas would be in the community, I would think.
Okay, so with the blue line, you're taking clergy input. With the snow, you're not taking the input of the people that actually live here and deal with it?
If I could jump in real quick?
Okay.
Just 12 o'clock, a second, please. What, because Ted wasn't here originally, I think, when this started, Mr. De Pasco. I don't think he's aware that we're looking for a citizens' snow committee versus, and that's what's happening here, and I think we need to address, you know, come up if we're going to do that once these guys meet and then have another meeting with, and I don't know how we're going to pick it, but some people from the community who want to have some...
Remember you had that ward thing you promised many years ago, a representative from each ward? There's an idea that's five people, right?
Board leaders.
I don't have no problem to change the hours and maybe have a meeting 6 o'clock or 7 o'clock.
But if there are no residents involved in it, then what's the point? You know, if it's only a point...
I allow the chances of a resident to go on 6 o'clock or 7 o'clock, so it's up to him to change the hours.
Well, I think what should happen is this meeting should take place and then a following meeting, another meeting take place, because I think there has to be some type of parameter set in who's going to be on this committee.
My apologies, I don't think I explained this properly. Because today is my 30-day anniversary, I have no prior history to any of this. So what I wanted to...
But you watched all the videos!
Well, all those videos can describe everything that needs to be addressed in the city of Hackensack. Well, I wanted to sit down with these people and get some kind of lay of the land first. Obviously, the mayor has promised, and I understand that we need this input, but I'm just trying to figure out what the basic approach is and what the city has done in the past.
Nothing.
Once we have this information, I'd be more than glad to sit with the residents, to get their input, and to work forward to coming up with solutions.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments.
Rich Cerbo.
Sir?
Spring Valley Ave., Hackensack. John, quick, I just bring up that the buses are now, you know, traveling 50, 60 miles an hour. Yeah? I'm not kidding. I'm serious. Check it out. When they're behind, they're going down the hill toward Maine, going 50 miles...
You're talking about on Spring Valley, correct?
Just telling you, it's absolutely ridiculous.
I will ask the city manager to put the, our trailer out there with the...
Yeah, and don't forget, that road was posted for no vehicles over 4 tons 50 years ago. I mean, come on, that's been, that's been posted, so come on, it's, why can't we police that and get it going? Okay, I just want to, I'm going to quote a writer and a soldier in the German army that opposed the Nazis, okay? His name was Friedrich Kellner, and he said that spineless politics doesn't change the mind, okay? So, look, can't we, I talked about this last time, I don't know what your response was because I had to leave, but, you know, this political rift is harmful, I think. I have respect for both sides, I said. It's what happens in a local community, but it really stunts everything, okay? Because it's so cutthroat that it keeps everyone out. It keeps the vote down, it keeps people afraid to be involved, and that's what we have here now, okay? So, please, John, be a leader, step up, put out a, put the olive branch out, have a roundtable, John, you know? Have a roundtable, a discussion, how we could, how we can, how we could change the political culture in Hackensack. I think it'd be a good idea, you know? Okay, Mr. Carver, could I just get maybe a paragraph or two on the breakdown of lawsuits and what we paid for, what we, I don't really get the scheme, and is there a scheme to it, that what the taxpayers are on the hook for and how they aren't, when they are, when and who and what? So, could you just give me one paragraph on when we... Come here.
The city is a member of the South Bergen Joint Insurance Fund.
Right.
It also participates with the Municipal Excess Liability Fund and has commercial insurance in various layers. It depends on the type of case. I think right now, the self-insured retention for the city, that means the amount of money that the city actually pays when there's a recovery or a settlement or lawsuit is limited to $500,000. And of course, it could be much less than that depending on the particular lawsuit. In most cases, not all cases, but in most cases, any money's above $500,000 is taken care of through insurance, either the self-insurance pools or the municipal excess liability or commercial insurance. There are exceptions, but that's the general answer.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Also, today's November 1st. I paid my taxes and the taxes are due in a few days. I think you get a few-day grace period, and I just still want to stand here and say I think taxes are too high. I don't know, you know, you touted yourself and the council lowering taxes somehow, and, you know, I still don't see many people whose taxes were lowered. Mine went up again, I don't know how, because my house is seemingly not in as good a shape as it was last year or the year before. So, you know, I just, I just want to mention that taxes are going up and we're still giving, you know, tax breaks to developers. I'm sure there's more of that going on. I mean, that seems to be off the conversation now. We certainly haven't brought up the tax giveaways, the windfall for the developers in town that just seem to sweep into town and get all kinds of tax breaks when everybody else is footing the bill. Do you know what I'm saying? I mean, come on, it's, you know, you can't hide, you can't hide from that anymore, John, and when it ceases to be part of the discussion, I'm going to always bring it up, okay? Because, look, you know, the world, the world provides for everyone's needs, okay? But it doesn't provide for everyone's greed, okay? So, look, if you're going to stand behind just greed giveaways or, I mean, greedy developers who are looking for giveaways and you're accommodating them, okay, look, that's five minutes already?
That's it, sir, you're, you got about 10 extra, thank you.
Good evening, Kathleen Savile, 184 Hudson Street. I want to welcome our new city manager. I wasn't here the last meeting, I was in Florida, and welcome you, and you inherited a big mess. I sympathize with you. The only thing I ask is that you become a city manager and not a redeveloper person. The last five people that we had were more involved with redevelopment than they were in the everyday operation of this big city, and we have a lot of problems in this big city, and we need you to be a hands-on city manager, and I hope that's what's going to happen here. I apologize for you not knowing about the snow committee, but we did come to this group before and ask that we have citizen participation because although the DPW does a good job and the removal is done really, really well, there are concerns that we have also with the police department with enforcing the no parking when road is snow-covered. I mean, that's written in stone and it should be enforced, and we have big problems with that. So that's why it was decided that we do have residents participate in that committee, like Regina said. You can get accustomed to what's going on, like I said, they do a good job, and this is a big city. They spend a lot of time on Main Street cleaning that, like bone clean and other places were neglected. Maybe a main street line should contribute in that. The schools should have priority, we should work with the janitors, that's another thing, another input we have, that the janitors should bring the dirt, the snow right to the curb, and that where the drop-off point is for the children should be removed to be spotlessly cleaned so we drop off the kids, they don't fall into the cars. I've been advocating that for years. There are a lot of problems. Getting back to the garbage trucks, I hope you move quickly on it because I think it takes nine months before it's ordered in order to, in order to deliver a garbage truck, and our men, we decided to keep them, which is wonderful, but they're working under bad conditions with the equipment that they do have. And the trucks do have to be adopted for that, the system that we have, whereas it has to have an adoption so that you could dump the garbage cans, I don't know if you're familiar with the way it works. So that has to be done wholesale, and that takes time, and we've been waiting a long time. But then I see $55,000 for seats, $52,000 for seats in the auditorium. This is a new thing, that the money just keeps pouring in and it keeps appearing, and the things that we've had on the back burner for the last 10 years have not been addressed. We can't do one at the expense of the other. This needs to have, you know, priority of getting these garbage trucks in as soon as possible, because these men need the tools to do their job right. I have a problem with the lights in the parking lot. I'm going to be talking to you. We had, I know the timer is off, but we need more lighting in the parking lot.
Just supply me with your name and number where I can reach to. We can speak offline and have a conversation about these issues.
Okay, yeah, there's a lot of things that have to be addressed. I had good report, last city manager was a disaster. I say he was a liability and I came true. But, all right, I will give you my name and address.
Thank you, ma'am.
Then anyway, I welcome you, and I agree with everybody, anything that was said, let's move on. Let's be, let's not call each other names. We want to bring people to Hackensack, and also we have a big problem with property maintenance. Hackensack has to look clean and look inviting for people to want to be here. So, I mean, we're always in the news and always in a negative way, so I think that we should move on and we be above this and we be growing up about it.
In the right direction.
And thank you. Okay.
Here you go, ma'am.
Lenny Nix, the Hilton Hasbrook Heights, room 233. The sports that we're doing in the town should be going to the school. We're not in the sports business, we're in running the city. The soccer field, forget it. I thought it was a good idea to get rid of the garbage, the DPW. The way things are going, waste management, you cannot keep waste, you cannot keep up with waste management. The way they operate, the way they pick up the trash at night, I think, and the head of the DPW is an ex-cop, that's a no-no. We got to get different guys around here. You guys are going to, everybody's going to beat themselves against the wall. I'll tell you right now, I'm not happy with the city manager, I haven't been happy with anybody. I'm not happy with the boards, any of the planning boards and the zoning boards. I'm not going to BS around. I've been here too long, my mother's been 93 years, and she's in a nursing home, and I'm sleeping in a freaking hotel, and there's a lot of people making a lot of goddamn money in this town that don't deserve it. A lot of waste, lot of waste, lot of waste. I'm sleeping in freaking dates, serve my country, I got treated like a piece of crap. And for you to laugh, Naya...
I'm not laughing.
Yes, you did! Don't tell me you did it! You laugh, you'll get it. I ain't going to get into it. You don't know what you're doing!
Okay.
Not even close! The police cars should be parked on the perimeter parking lot. Forget the blue line. So when you go central or you... So when you go central or you, you see police cars. The police are our last line of resort, civil defense, before you call the National Guard. Whether you like it or not, that's it. They've been that way since the beginning they were formed. All this blue line, black line, pink line, all what happened in Dallas, Texas, Agua, Alaska, and Tokyo, Japan, has nothing to do with Hackensack. It's just a, and I grew up in the 70s, so this, what's going on is nothing. The cops and the cops, not cops, I apologize, they are law enforcement officers. You guys pass the law, they're going to deal with it. That's it. If there's a problem with an officer, we have the police that'll take care of themselves. And I've been around police, I've fought with them, and they've helped me, and they've put me in my place when needed be done. So, I'm sick of all these new fang-dangled things. The world's been the same way since the beginning of time, people. They are the law enforcement officers. We got things, this, I'm with the National Justice for Preservation, so you can't beat me on no, nobody in this county can beat me, including the bums at the county. I don't like the historic plan to hold. There's so much that nobody knows what they're doing, not even close. The Main Street landscaping is not, it's nothing. It's a blank piece of paper. There's a whole, and I follow this as much as I can throughout the world, what's going on. 50-story buildings being up. If you're not building that, you're wasting your time. I built 30 stories when I was 24 years old, in the 70s. Fort Lee has two of them. Chinese building the world, the biggest buildings in Jersey. We're all here, we made those stuff, peeled potatoes and plant farm country again. Redevelopment is not the way you did it. You take from the courthouse to New York South Square, to the river, to Main Street, bring one guy in or a bunch of agglomeration, billion-dollar project, not this stupid board project. I don't even, I can't even follow these stupid projects. What's going on? Who knows? They go to the diner and ask them. Concentrate, the railroad, the river, they took, I got plans for the bridges to get the boats under those bridges. That's federal law, and I will fight you tooth and nail. The ironic thing is, you've got Davison's area, Joe's area, Kramer, Davies, lawyers I can only want to believe, in Hackensack. We're like in the middle of some faraway planet. People got to be laughing at us. $200-plus million, year after year, and I'm sleeping in a freaking ditch, getting thrown out of hospital, getting treated like a piece of F H I T. And everything you hear, all you.
Your five minutes is up, Mr. Nix. Thank you.
Let's do something.
Mr. Nix, your five minutes is up. Thank you.
My five minutes is never going to be up here.
Your five minutes is up.
Do it, Tom.
For the record.
For the record.
When I chuckled, it was about him not liking our new city manager, who he met less than an hour ago. So, and not pertaining, not pertaining to his service to this country, which I.
I got no care of this country.
Absolutely did have service to this country, and to that, I acknowledge you for that.
I do nothing special.
Sit down, Mr. Nix. Mrs. Davis?
We don't make, we make stories about me.
Mr. Nix? One more out first, you're out.
I'm out.
You're out. Go, please. Goodbye.
Don't make stories about me.
We won't talk about you at all, sir. Thank you.
Good.
Headphones, please. Sorry, Ms. Davis.
That's all right. I am a registered nurse. I understand. Hackensack, New Jersey. I just want to say that this is one of the first meetings I've been to the last couple of minutes, that it sounded like a city council meeting should be.
I'm ready.
I'm usually here, and it sounds like a battleground.
That's a big problem, nurse.
And it shouldn't have to be a battleground. So I appreciate that tonight, I don't know what the difference was, maybe because there's several officers here, shouldn't have to need them here. There was not the name-calling that we usually have, there was not the disrespect for the officers when they ask people to be quiet that we usually have. I'm very appreciative because this is one of the reasons why many people, and I've said it before, do not come out to the city council meetings because they don't want to be a part of that. Everybody's entitled to their opinion, I've said that before, but it can be done in a way that doesn't sound like we're in the middle of a war zone somewhere. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Appreciate that. Seeing nobody else, can I have a motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Roll call? Second? Roll call?
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Constrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Simmons Zappson?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen-Guys?
Aye.
Everybody from the dais? Leo?
Well, in the past, I tried to work together with people like Kenny, Jack, Josieza, and they know that I really try. Now that I am here, for over three years, I've been taking attacks against me, my wife, you know? And everything that I say, enough is enough. And for now, I'm going to answer, and I don't want to allow more attacks against my wife or any of my relatives or my person. That's clear. I don't want to take it anymore. Thank you.
Deputy?
I think we've made it clear on many occasions that we will not be discussing current litigation in council meetings. Mr. Salkin, as an attorney, I think you're well aware of those statements, and I feel your comments tonight about your own wife's case that's in process is extremely inappropriate at best. Not to belabor the Ziza issue, heard from a number of people that talk about it, talked about it tonight, and it sounds like most of you had read information in the papers. So I think you do understand that the problem is not with complying to the court's order, the problem is how this settlement, and yes, it was signed as a settlement agreement, how this all came to fruition. We have absolutely no problem, none of the council members have any problem with following the court order, and I think that that's evident by how expeditiously we have gotten these resolutions on, pursued the finance board immediately, got it on the soonest agenda we could, had the hearing tonight so that on the 22nd, we can follow through on the final step of this process. We also want to put it behind us. Our primary concern is always protecting our taxpayers. We don't want to pursue issues with Mr. Ziza that we don't have to, and we certainly don't want to spend any unnecessary tax dollars on more legal representation in this case. There were other issues that were involved as part of this settlement, and perhaps there was some confusion by some when they read, as you spoke tonight, when they read the editorial article. Other than following the court order, which I think I just defined our, our position there, the city had administrative charges against Mr. Ziza, and Mr. Ziza had a tort claim that was involving the city. This council's hope was that, yes, we could all put it behind us, that we would remove our charges against Mr. Ziza as he would remove the city from that. I think I heard agreement from folks tonight that were speaking that the city did not prosecute and did not convict Mr. Ziza. Let's put the case where the case belongs, not with the city. And we are the ones that wanted to put it behind us, drop our charges, get the city out of it, let's follow the court order, let's do what we're required to do and allow Mr. Ziza to move on. How he pursues this with those parties that actually brought this about does not involve the city and should not involve the city. And that is the primary issue that this council had with this particular settlement agreement, other than the fact that the way the settlement agreement was executed. And that has nothing to do with Mr. Ziza. That has to do with the internal workings of this particular city. I thank you for coming. I agree with points of focusing on the positive. I think that's extremely important. We are a city that has made tremendous strides towards improving itself, its downtown, its parks, its recreational facilities, its paving, I think we paved 64 streets now, cultural arts, bringing the arts back into the city. We have so many things to be proud of as a city, and we need to keep reminding ourselves and putting our focus and our vision there. I hope you folks see that as well as we do, and we continue to move in that direction. Thank you.
I don't have much to say tonight, except that I'm very happy that we are moving forward with getting the trucks for sanitation for DPW. And that's it. Thank you all for coming out tonight.
Thank you. The Stars Day was mentioned before, is our annual senior November Fest luncheon. It's a great day for the seniors down at the M&amp;M Building. As the city manager mentioned earlier, it's our first scheduled bus trip, which I'm sure tickets are going to go fast because there's only one bus going out for all the seniors in Hackensack, so. But in the future, we definitely plan to, to up this and, you know, get two, three busloads of folks going out to enjoy a good time. This is something the seniors should be doing, something we should be doing for them, so I think it's a great thing. 11/11, I believe, is Veterans Day, very important day, come down to the green for the ceremony. It's a, it's a wonderful ceremony, usually some great speakers, guest speakers. You get to see all the wreaths put around the monument. The snow, the snow committee, I just wanted to talk about a couple of things, especially towing. Last year, we upped the towing considerably. Mr. Aronberg, you weren't here at the time. We just did get communications from the county that they are going to, again, be doing all the county roads, all right? But they wanted to make sure that we were enforcing that cars on the road would be towed or ticketed or whatever, and we need to make sure that's part of the discussion that goes on with these snow committees, getting these cars off the streets. Again, I'm sure we'll come up with a way to oblige people by giving them a place to park at some of our public parking lots, which we have, Lot C, Lot D, other lots can be used, which normally would be empty on a snowstorm anyway. But that's a definitely good option to get these cars off the road. And again, I want to thank Kathy for that, the way she described that, because I thought she did a good job. And I want to, again, congratulate our city managers, first 30 days. I think you're doing a great job.